Okay.
Not by now, I might have got...
Oh.
We'll have to swap and change the official.
Will we go? Right, okay. Okay, welcome everybody. This is obviously our annual meeting at Oakham Town Council, Wednesday 30th of May. It is just coming up to seven o'clock, so the council is happy with that. Obviously, we've no additional members of the public ever made, so it's just us councillors together. Before we start the meeting, I think it would be just be kind to remember passing of an ex-mayor of Oakham Town Council, William Schofield, who sadly passed away this week. So if everybody would like to just take one minute to consider their thoughts related to that.
Oh, we're not standing.
Okay, that's one minute, thank you very much.
Just to say, it would be a council on behalf of both the town council if we wrote to Mrs. Schofield. Bill Schofield had been mayor for three times for this council. Yes? Well, he told me three, sorry. And I won't dispute it. And I think it would be fitting for this town council to actually send a letter of condolence.
Yeah, that's...
And would I add also, that thank you to whoever put the flag at half mast. Thank you.
Yeah, I noticed that was yesterday. Thank you very much. Okay, so this brings me to my last duty as chair and mayor of Oakham Town Council. And that is to... Start the process, is the word, I suppose, isn't it? For the... to look to elect a new chairman of the council, who will also take up the position of the mayor of Oakham for the forthcoming municipal year. So I would like to ask if there are any nominations for a person to take up this role.
I would nominate councillor Aldeus.
Anybody who'd like to second that?
I'll second that, no, no.
And any other nominations? No, okay, so can I take a vote on that? Is everybody... All those in favour? Okay, against? We don't have to have against for that one, okay.
Mine is an abstention, which I said to Mr. Durris in this conference.
Okay, so in that case, I would like to offer you my congratulations for your second turn of office. You've been there before, you know it's... And I'll have to do my pins now, so...
What's all pinned?
Otherwise it falls off as you run away. I'll give you mine. Yes. Put this one on.
Thank you very much.
There you go.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Oh, and you get a kiss, that's nice. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you don't have to kiss really. What a cheer.
Yeah, look happy.
Get your conch.
If I'm talking down then...
Oh, put the badge right.
All right.
Thank you.
I need dressing.
There's a man. Women here to dress you men.
That's better.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sam, and to the table over to you.
Thank you, thank you very much everyone for the confidence and respect I get for being there. I consider this to be a privilege and an honour to be mayor. Although I've done it before, it is my lesson, I must admit. And I'll do my best to carry out the dual roles of chairman and mayor in coming here. Thank you. But also I'd like to thank Jane for her hard work and also for her dedication during her time as a council and to wish her well for the future. No, I didn't say that, no. Also, it's one of the take. As recognition of being chairman and mayor, there's... Will you?
Congratulations.
Yes.
Lovely, thank you.
Okay, and the most...
And the past man's badge. The box is recycled, then, I need it back.
That's recycling, isn't it?
Yeah, that's recycling.
Okay, thank you very much, Jane.
It's a pleasure. But I just, I know I said it earlier, but you know, it has been an absolute pleasure and honour to be chairman and mayor of the town for the year. I'm hoping, well, we have said a little bit of history, I think. Certainly on this board, I'll have to get my name put up there later. It's quite nice to see mine and what has been marked, you know, up there, so that's quite nice. A little bit of local history to be proud of. So thank you all very much for your hard work, your support, and I sincerely wish you all the best.
Thank you very much, Jane.
Your next four years, and you for here, and the council for yours.
Thank you very much, and just look for the future. I think I've got to sign something, haven't I?
Actually, you might need to write this down, I think, Richard.
Okay, I presume all the members have signed their acceptance.
Yeah.
You've got to leave it, it's up to you.
Good job, Jerry, I do believe. Please, please, Steve, it's... Thank you. Good luck.
Okay, I will play as quick as I can.
There's a client on call.
Okay, with the agenda then, and item three is apologies, and we have apologies from councillor Low. Do you have a proposal to accept councillor Low's apologies?
Yes.
Best sound, thank you.
One in favour? Any declarations of interest, particularly any disposable pecuniary interest that you may have in respect of the items on the agenda? And any other interests you may have in respect of items on the agenda, so pecuniary and other items. Obviously, you're all going to be signing your declarations of interest over the next 28 days, so obviously you will need to put them on there. And even for the previous town councils, that needs to be a re-declaration. Okay, item five, I come to the election of the vice-chairman. And from the chair, I propose councillor Adam Low as vice-chairman.
I'll second that.
Second that. Are there any other nominations? All those in favour? Six.
And those against? Abstention.
And we have said in the last time, there's a declaration of acceptance of office which I...
Well, we have had all declarations of acceptance of office in chairman, so we don't need to say anything.
I've just reminded everybody that their declarations need to be interesting, so they need to be within 28 days. The minutes of the meeting of the 15th of April. Are there any comments about those minutes?
Yes, if I may. I have a concern about the minoting of the public deputations. Could be seen that we don't actually record them or take any interest. So I was wondering if it's possible in future, I know we can't name members of the public anymore, that's the advice the council were given. But I think it's important that every member of the public gives their time to give a deputation, that perhaps a summary of that deputation is included, whether they were for the item or against the item. Otherwise, it seems pointless minoting, but as it is...
I thought you were purely saying it should be recorded whether it's for or against the item.
Well, no, just, sorry, I feel that there should be a summary of what was said included in the agenda. Otherwise, it just, what is the point of giving a deputation if there's no record of that deputation?
I think we have to be very careful about recording minutes because they're not verbatim record of what was said.
No, I'm not asking.
No, let me think. And that if you're going to do a summary, a praise of what was said, the deputations by the public could be larger than the minutes for other items on the agenda.
But in the past though, I think people have provided written and they were minoted, and it's only recently that they've actually stopped minoting.
No, you...
I mean, I personally, chairman, I have no issue with what councillor Brooks has suggested, that a summary of a member of the public's deputation, I think we... I mean, we write them down, we write them down anyway, and so I don't see that would be an issue.
Any good?
It's not a bad idea if you just do it.
Sorry, yeah.
I need to...
You've got to get used to this.
It's only for council meetings, love this.
No, I was just thinking, if it's, as councillor Brooks says, it was put in a line of tribute just to say what their point was, so at least it's registered, a few years ago.
Any other questions?
Chairman, though, it is recorded, isn't it?
It's recorded on tape, yes, but it's not recorded in the minutes of the council.
It is recorded on tape.
So in years, once that tape has been wiped, I'd say, yeah.
True.
It won't be available, but I hope the minutes will be available...
Forever.
Long, as long as paper lasts, I mean. But, yes, well, shall we just have a trial on that? A very short, um, praise of what was said, whether the deputation was for or against the item, something like that. No more than sentence, probably two sentences, I think. Okay, depends obviously what the deputation was. Yeah, I'll go to that one. Okay, no one to point about the minutes? Okay, Sam, close it for second minutes. Second that. It's got to be somebody who's here. All those in favour, only those over here who voted.
It's all, and there'll be three that you might call and...
Three, three. Okay, councillors' questions, none have been submitted. Members' reports, well, I'm not sure of any reports, so we're... Plots report, no, no.
Thank you, chairman. We'll have a copy of this in front of you, so very, very quickly. Internal audit and accounts for the last year 2014-15. So the final audit for this will be taking place on May the 21st, next Thursday. So during this, the internal auditor will be checking, among other things, the council's accounts for the year. Following this, council will be asked to approve the accounts at its meeting that's provisionally scheduled. Obviously, members are making a decision on the scheduling of meetings later on in the meeting for June the 10th. There is a statutory notice advertising electors' rights, that has now been posted in the notice board outside the external and as in accordance with the timetable, a revised timetable that we asked the external auditors to set. Just to perhaps recap on what Jane mentioned earlier on about the skate park. The order has been sent to the chosen suppliers who are the new members, that company called Kalu Limited. Next stage, or this has already happened, we've also submitted the application for schedule monument consent. So this has gone to Historic England, now Historic England were English heritage, they are now Historic England. Just four new members, probably wondering why we have to put that application in. It's because the skate park is going in Cuts Close. Cuts Close is a scheduled monument, classified as a scheduled monument. So any work there needs scheduled monument consent. Just to recap on the finances, we've had £2,000 from the trustee of the memorial institute. We have today received from Rockham County Council documents relating to their £30,500. And the remainder of the £40,000 is being paid for by the town council. And as Jane said earlier on, we are looking at the end of June, we're looking at six weeks before this goes in. Okay, so by the end of June, we are hoping the new facility will be in there. Council training, I know some of you have signed up for this, but a reminder that a training session is being run on Monday, June the 8th, at the council chamber of Rockham County Council. That's from 10 till 1pm. So if anybody else apart from those who have already indicated they are attending wants to go, please let us know, so that we can book a place with you with the L, Leicester Rockham Association of Local Councils. So I think I might be going to that one as well, actually. Just to draw your attention to a couple of events that are happening over the next few weeks, or one next week in fact. Rockham Community Action Seminar, you've got some information attached to the report about this. If you wish to go, details of how to book are there. Rural, it's the Rural Community Council who are organising that. And if anybody is interested here, it's National Dementia Week next week. And there is a dementia friends information session being held at VAR on Tuesday the 9th, on next Tuesday, the 19th of May. Again, contact details are there if you wish to attend. Finally, again, Jane alluded to this earlier on. The Jell-O Street mural, I actually met with the installers this morning. There are issues there. What is happening is the mounting walls are actually bowing away from the wall. And as a result, three of the tiles are now cracked. So he has been out, he has had a look at it, he knows what the situation is. It's something that I've got to do with my end, but we are on top of that one as well, and it will all be done free of charge. Okay, so that's where they are with the Jell-O Street mural. Oh, sorry, just to finish off with that, I'm also liaising with Monica Fernandez, the artist, on the end of project report. The art council gave a grant of £6,000, but we've held 10% of that as we've got completed end of project report. Obviously, because I have been absent, that hasn't been done yet, so I am liaising with Monica on that.
Thank you, Chair.
Good, thank you.
Deputations for members of the public, any deputations, yes?
Yes, it's about item 13, appointment of standard committees and subcommittees. I very much hope that I can be reassured that there hasn't been either formal or informal pre-meeting meeting before this meeting to decide who will be on those committees, can the council reassure me of that?
Shall I complete your deputation?
Am I going to get an answer?
No answers to deputations. If you want an answer, then you need to write it.
Have we got something to hide?
No, not at all. It's in standing orders. Next point is general power of competence. Would you want to go on?
Yes, thank you, chairman. I mean, obviously, you've had information that went out with the agendas, and you then had some supplementary information that was sent out to you all. This was basically a copy of a sort of basic fact sheet about the general power of competence that I was given when I attended a training session on this. I mean, firstly, has anybody got any questions about what the general power of competence is? What it may do for the council, or what it may not do for the council? Well, just, I've just made a few bullet points here. It's a power of first resort. That's the overriding thing, that councillors who do not have the GPOC, as Oakham Town Council hasn't had, have had to look for powers in various statutes if it wanted to do something. Obviously, there are, you know, restrictions as to what a council can do. Whereas a general power of competence is almost like this overriding first power of first resort. So the council can always go back to the GPOC. Now, it allows the council to do anything that an individual could generally do, provided obviously that it doesn't break any laws. Okay, I mean, one of the examples in the sort of fact sheet, if you like, that I've sent out, was the council obviously can't send a person to prison, because an individual can't send a person to prison. Okay, it covers most of the council's activities. The vast majority of them, I'm struggling to think of any that it wouldn't cover. The general advice is it is of benefit to councils, but it is not a carte blanche for the council to do anything that it wants. Okay, that's the other key thing. So any decision that requires GPOC is obviously a decision of the council, so that's, you know, that's still, that still needs to happen. Any financial activity which the GPOC now allows a council to do, such as investing in a local company, making a loan to a local business, would absolutely need to be very carefully considered, and there is considerable government guidance on this as well. Okay, so along with legal advice, that guidance, the council would have to take that as necessary, which would obviously be down to myself and Alison to get that information to you. So the system of checks and balances is still there. It's not sort of saying, right, the council, we've got the general power of competence, let's go and do this, that or the other. You know, the decisions still have to be made by the council themselves. Starts immediately, any appropriate resolutions made, okay? The resolution doesn't have to be made at this meeting, I will stress that, okay? It doesn't have to be made here, but it lasts for the lifetime of the council. So even if there are less than eight elected councils, which is two thirds of the 12, or for whatever reason, if I'm no longer the clerk, and a new clerk is appointed, and they do not have the statutory qualifications, you still have the general power of competence. It lasts for four years, you don't have to renew it every year, or if circumstances change, okay? Now, restrictions, so you can't use it to, well, quite appropriately, with Vincent there, fire service, Oakham Town Council can't run a fire service, it can't run a police. You know, these are statutory duties of other authorities. Education, social services, things like that, you can't do that. One thing, you cannot also use it to delegate authority to an individual councillor or councillors, that is enshrined in law, and GPOC does not override that. So any delegation of authorities still has to come to officers of the council, okay? Or to a committee, subcommittee, or another local authority. You can't use it to raise further revenue through the precept, it's not a tax raising power by any means. The precept has been set, so you cannot say, we would like some more money using the general power of competence, you are not allowed to do that, okay? You must also consider that there are various things, one of them is the Crime Disorder Act. There are a few others, but I've just highlighted that one in any decision that you make. You've also got to consider the impact of any decision that you make. For instance, if you do loan money to a local business, how would that may impact on another local business? Okay, so there are lots of sort of caveats on the GPOC. And the final one is that if you do take an action on the GPOC, it may be covered by another law somewhere. Now, if that law has restrictions on it, then those restrictions still apply, okay? It's a power of first resort, but it's not an absolute, you know, blanket power. There is a lot to consider of it, but it would be of benefit to the council. It would allow, if it chose to do so, to undertake certain other activities that it currently can't do, but that would obviously be through consultation, on guidance, et cetera, et cetera. So that's really where we are with it, chairman.
Any questions, comments from members?
Just one question, chairman. One of the things that you mentioned, Richard, was that all decisions have to be made by councillors. Now, in the past, in the summer of the month of August, we used to give delegated powers for planning applications to be decided by the clerk. Does that mean that couldn't be done?
No, 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 as I said earlier, Sam, the scheme of delegation down to officers is still in place. It's not down to individuals, you cannot say that you have the power to make a recommendation on a planning application. Okay, so it doesn't, it doesn't stop that. So the scheme of delegation, if the council, if mine is did, would have to be to the officers. Okay?
I didn't want to be first. It's a very complicated power. If I ask some questions, and I don't know how you want to do this, if I just spill off what I've got to say, it's brief, and then maybe they can be answered. But can I just point out first, the clerks said that it's still applied if we lose the clerk or councillors. This information we've been given actually says that's not the case. You can continue with a project, but it says in there, if the council loses its qualified clerk or has insufficient elected councillor, then it must record its ineligibility at the next relevant meeting of the council, and it goes on.
The relevant annual meeting is the meeting after ordinary elections.
But I've read...
That's four years, that's the last four years.
It says that you have to, you can continue a project, that you're not allowed to start a new one, and you can't have a clerk on a temporary contract, you've got to have a permanent. So it's a very complicated thing. There's, it's there in the writing. Also, there's a huge risk which is mentioned, and the clerk kindly mentioned it by saying that you can't just do carte blanche, but the law in some ways does give that. But we've got to remember that everything that the town council does, we're accountable to the public. And my fear is that I don't understand why at this stage that the council wants to implement this. I don't see a reason that it would cover for. And my fear is that perhaps something's in the pipeline that will go ahead. It may go right, it may go wrong, but to me, it seems to be given an unnecessary power at this stage. And I just wonder if the chairman or the clerk knew why, what need there is to implement it for this town council, because I couldn't find one.
I think the clerk's explained why we aren't implementing it in his briefing.
As far as I can say, chairman, I don't believe it has been, it gives the council immense power, but it also, it also has to be remem... immense power, but it also has to be remembered, you know, that you've got to involve the public in those decisions. And my experience of this past council is that they haven't tended to want to do that. And this, although it allows, to me, it's too lenient and it's given the opportunity of this power is imposed to do what we want. And I feel that's dangerous for the council to be put in its current condition.
I don't know what you mean by its current condition, but the point is that many parish councils who have the qualifications to do it have done it, even small parish councils. So there's no restriction, there's nothing underhand being done. It still means...
No, I'm not suggesting...
It still means that the council still has to go through the standard processes, it still has to go, anything or expenditure still has to go to the council, there has to be consultation when necessary with member public. So that still has to be done. But it just eases the, you don't have to keep looking for an act of power to do it, as the clerk said, it's what any individual would be able to do as long as it's legal.
But just to finish with my, because my main concern is obviously when I talked about the past council, is when a quarter of the precept was just spent on the gym.
Just a minute, can we just stick to the agenda?
It is, it's things we do, it's projects.
Let's stick to the agenda, please.
I am sticking to it, but I'm saying that what I fear...
You're not sticking to the agenda, so please stick to the agenda.
I'm highlighting that as a concern, because I fear that once this council adopts this thing, whatever you want to call it, an act, that that could happen again. And I don't want that to happen again. Yes, we look at the state of the gym. You said you didn't want to go on to that, but you spent a quarter of the precept on that project and there was no consultation with the public. And this power allows you to do worse.
It might have easily been done, didn't it, in the following down, Chairman? However, I mean, if I can just come back to your point, which I must admit, I do strongly dispute because I think you've got completely wrong, Chancellor.
I showed it as confused.
The council is required to, sorry, the local council must decide in a formal meeting of the council, which is where we are, that it meets the criteria for eligibility at that particular point in time. And it does. You have a qualified clerk, you have nine elected councillors, okay? A resolution to this effect must be written clearly in the minutes of that meeting. If that's the case, then obviously it will be. The council is then required to revisit that decision and make a new resolution at every relevant annual meeting. Relevant annual meeting at the bottom of the page is clearly says, is the annual meeting of the council after the ordinary election that normally takes place every four years. Okay, this means, the next sentence, this means that eligibility remains in place until the first annual meeting of the council after the ordinary election, even if the condition of the eligibility criteria has changed. So even if there are less than two thirds elected councillors and you have a clerk who isn't qualified, the eligibility for general power competence remains in place for four years. And I think that is quite clearly there under section criteria for eligibility.
Because I'm looking at the next page, would you like me to read it? I'm not legally qualified, but it specifically... Yes, it specifically says there, basically, I'll read the paragraph and if the clerk will explain if I'm wrong, this is the problem with this act, I'm not legally qualified, I don't think anybody is around here, it's a very complicated act. But it clearly says, if the council loses its qualified clerk or has insufficient elected councillors, then it must record its ineligibility at the next relevant, it does say annual meeting of the council.
And the relevant annual meeting is the meeting after the ordinary elections.
I think the point you're coming to is that it's coming up to the next relevant meeting, which is the end of the four-year term, and therefore the council can only continue with projects which has started during that four years. It cannot take anything else out.
Yes, that's what I was trying to say.
So if it's a project which started six months before the election and lasted a year, then obviously they've completed that project. But once the election is complete, then they cannot start another project.
Yes, that makes sense.
That's what it means, okay?
I think perhaps so.
Sorry, please, no, no, I can't take it.
Staffing committee, I should advise you, deals with confidential matters relating to employee staff. Therefore, it's essential requirement that members must be able to maintain that confidentiality. I mean, the consequence of confidential information being released into the public domain could result in the council being sued and obviously the cost emanating from that. There's also the planning subcommittee, which is still in its experimental stage and is due to be reviewed together with the future of the planning and parks committee. So those two, the subcommittee and the planning and park committee are due to be reviewed shortly. Planning subcommittee has four members, which is Stan, Vince and there are two vacancies. So tonight, we need to decide a grant membership of each committee, to agree that planning and parks and planning subcommittee be the subject of a review at the earliest opportunity, and that the terms of reference for planning and parks and planning subcommittee be reviewed in the above review of those committees, and that the terms of reference for staffing committee, I would suggest, should be reviewed by that committee at its first meeting. So going back to the beginning again, council and planning and parks, obviously all members comprise those committees. Staffing committee, which has four members, presently Adam Lowe, myself and Stan Stubbs. I know that Adam Lowe wishes to remain on staffing. I would like to remain on staffing. You would like to remain on staffing. Okay, are there any other nominations?
I would like to go on to staffing, please.
You want to go on second, okay. Anyone else?
Unless somebody's got a nomination.
Oh, no.
No, I'll second it.
I'm sure they'll say if they have.
Does that need to be seconded?
Yeah, just a minute. Okay, are there any nominations, anybody else wants to join? Okay, can I then have nominations for Adam Lowe?
I'm nominating Adam Lowe. It might be easier, Chairman, to take one. So the staffing committee would then comprise of councillors Alf Duas, Adam Lowe, Stan Stubbs and Mrs Joyce Lucas.
All right, I'm sorry, no, I'm going to take them individually.
Right.
Take them individually, yeah. So nominations for Adam Lowe. Seconded. Nominations for myself.
So who, Vince and who seconded it?
Yeah, Stan, wasn't it? You seconded it. Um, nominations for myself.
I nominate.
Seconded. Nominations for Stan.
I'll second it.
And nominations for Joyce Lucas. Paul and Stan, okay. Okay, so I've got nominations and seconds for that. Can I have, have you got a vote on that?
I thought that's what you were going to do, Chairman, to be honest with you.
No, I'm going to take individual nominations and second.
Right, okay, I'm nominating.
Okay, so we now have nominations, seconds for Adam, myself, Stan and Joyce Lucas. All those in favour? Okay, good answer, okay, thank you. Planning subcommittee, at the moment it's got four members, or should have four members, Stan Stubbs and Vince Howard and two vacancies. Can I...
Yeah, I'd like to for that.
You'd like to?
Can I nominate?
Hang on, just a minute, yeah, sure, just a minute. So we've got David nominating himself, has anybody seconded?
I'll second David.
Okay.
Can I nominate?
Hang on, slow down.
Can I make an important comment? I know you're going to review this committee, but I think it's very important that there's representation for each ward based on the current workings of that subcommittee. If that's helpful with nominations, I think that's very important that every ward is represented and we only have four wards.
You're going to put yourself forward, Michael? Because you're the only member on that ward.
I'd love you to say so.
Are you interested?
Yes, I'm not necessarily qualified in by knowing very much about it, but I...
Got me some train, get up speed.
So I've got Michael.
Can I nominate Michael?
Well, it's somebody to keep up to. Who's seconded him?
Sorry, yes, yes.
Stan, you're saying, can I nominate Paul? Do I have a second of a poll?
Yes.
Of course, okay. Right then, we now have, sorry, no more? No more, okay. So we now have Stan Stubbs and Vince Howard, I presume both want to remain on the planning. David Spanxby, Michael Elliott and Paul. So we've got five members wishing to fill four positions. So I've got to take a vote through, okay? I'll take... What?
Is any of those members going to drop out, probably the easiest one?
I've just decided, I've just said no.
All right, okay. Right.
Mr Duas?
Yes, go on.
Can I suggest that as we're allowed to a new council, that we increase the membership by five, because that has been an issue to me, that the membership is too small and unrepresentative, and we are entitled, I believe. If I could make a proposal, the membership is increased to five, if anybody could second that.
Do you have any second of increasing membership to five from four? Okay, right. All those in favour of increasing membership from five to four? Four to five.
One, two, three, four, five.
All those against?
Five.
I've seen.
One, I've seen.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm going to go against.
Five votes for, two against and one abstentions. So then to the planning subcommittee, councillors Stan Stubbs, Vince Howard, David Blanksby...
We don't need to vote, we're doing.
Sorry?
We don't need to vote.
There's been proposed that it's increased to five, there are five members there.
So we don't have to vote.
No, we're drawing, so...
Okay, right. Are those all the subcommittees? Any more? No? Okay, the next thing is terms of reference for planning and parks and the planning subcommittee. Can I suggest that these should be reviewed in the review of those two, of the committee and the subcommittee? I don't need any further comments on that.
Are you wanting us to defer our comments to another time, or can we comment now on what we believe?
No, I don't want any comments, all I'm saying is, do we agree that the terms of reference will be reviewed in the review of the two committees?
Winston reviewed it for two committees.
Immediately. It needs to be done within the next month.
Okay, can it not be done this evening?
No.
Okay, no problem.
Chairman, I mean, members there, I mean, you've got the current terms of reference there, that the staffing committee has no delegated authority, can only make recommendations to the council, that is the primary thing about the staffing committee and primarily considers matters relating to the council's employees. The planning subcommittee does actually have quite a wide ranging power in that delegated authority, because it can consider all planning applications received by the council and can make any observations or recommendations on those applications. But as I put in the report, there are some cases where a large planning application comes in or one that's considered of particular relevance or importance to Oakham, and that is then either considered by the council or the full planning and parks committee. So, and that has happened on a number of occasions where a large application has come in. In the usual way, there are sort of small applications I consider which is or whatever, the planning subcommittee can offer. The way you have one that maybe affects a town centre or something like that, and I believe there might be more, two of those coming up soon, then that, I think, you'd all agree, and the chairman of the planning subcommittee will probably agree that that should be seen by all members. So they are the current terms of reference anyway, whether they need to be changed is obviously subject to that.
It depends on the review, I would suggest. Any comments about? Do you have a proposal then to review those, join the review of the two committees?
I had a, sorry, I had a comment. And if, so if these terms of reference are on here this evening, would it be appropriate for me to comment on things that I've noted and...
Not necessarily, no. You need to do it in the review of the committees.
Does it not say on here that that's the purpose of this, to review it?
No.
It does, it says to decide whether the current committee structure is suitable for the council and to agree changes that may be required.
It's not something you can do at this meeting, it's something which is going to take longer.
So why is it on this document in front of me this evening?
Why is it on the document, so we can actually agree to do it?
It's actually saying there in black and cream that we can make decisions this evening. Is that an error?
I don't think we're in a position to make decisions this evening.
But I'd like to...
You can contribute to the review and the decision that comes out of it.
But there's a decision required here, recommendations see above, so you're now ignoring those decisions that are required. The members have agreed that.
The point was that it would be decided whether the planning subcommittee would remain and the planning and parks committee would remain. I would suggest to you, that's not something you can do.
It says here to decide...
I would suggest to you, that's not something you can do, the committee needs to look at the details of the committee and of the subcommittee.
But it quite clearly says here, decision required to decide whether the current committee structure is suitable for the council and to agree on any changes that may be required. And I asked you if I could do that and you said no. And at the bottom it says recommendations see above. So I believe that members here this evening, including myself, can make decisions and recommendations on that.
If you said that, then can I have a view of the members' ability to make decisions?
Mr Chair, can I propose that we set the review date and we have to review this as a deeper agenda item for a future meeting?
I would second that. The minimum wasn't enough for me, but to set a date would be fine.
Somebody wants to second it, you'll second it?
Yes. We need a date.
Okay, we come to a date. Okay, can I have, you was on what the date would be for that?
The next council meeting, sure.
It's likely the next council meeting will be the twenty seventh of May, which I think might have it timed.
I would suggest a July meeting, I think this is two months. It's definitely two months. There's no way this is going to be done in four weeks' time. That's my view.
Mr Chairman, yeah, I would recommend or suggest that we take a couple of months of it, because I've never seen the terms of reference, I think it takes time to read it, it's a standard. If I could come by with a recommendation or an observation.
Okay, so do you have a proposal for a date for the review to be considered by council?
The July meeting of councils, the eighth of July, or visually the eighth of July.
Can I propose that we have the review date set for the meeting of the eighth of July?
Yeah. All those in favour? Thank you very much. Okay, next thing is terms of reference. I think we agree that the planning and parks and the planning subcommittee, terms of reference, would be reviewed as part of that review. Is that agreed? Any favour?
Yeah.
Terms of reference for staffing committee, to be reviewed, suggestion is that it be reviewed by that committee at its first meeting. Any comments on that? Yours?
Yes.
Yes?
I would be happy for that and hopefully we will include in the review that you meet more than once, said for two years.
The staffing committee meets as well as required. It's not something that can happen monthly, if there's no business it doesn't happen. Any proposal for that?
Sorry, I...
But can we propose that you have a meeting as members to decide your terms of reference, which you'll then bring back to the, which I think you've done in the past, bring back to the full council to give the nod to officially? Because we don't really know what goes on in that meeting if we're not members, so we can't really decide ourselves, so that seems the appropriate. If I propose... So that seems the appropriate, if I propose that you go away and set up your terms of reference or amend and then come back to us with the report?
Fair proposal, and Mr. Brooks who can just summarise that, is that the staffing committee meets really as soon as practical and agrees its terms of reference to come back to the council for approval?
Yeah.
All in favour?
Yeah. I'd rather second it than I...
Second it was.
Give it up, say.
Well, Joyce, thank you. And everybody was...
Thank you very much. Item fourteen, the appointment of the treaty board. Do you have any nominations for the appointment of the treaty board?
I haven't asked her, but I normally will always ask a person before I nominate, so I do apologise. But I would like to nominate Joyce.
Joyce, happy to continue?
Sorry. I said yes, sorry, I didn't say yes to you.
Okay. You're appointed then as a preboard. All those in favour, sorry. Right, representation on other organisations. Now, in discussion with the clerk, it is proposed that we defer this item to the next meeting on the 27th of May. The reason for that is that the clerk can then contact each body to ascertain the number of representatives that need to be invited, allows the council to assess the number of reps it would like to send. If you recall, some bodies have three representatives, some have one, and there's some doubt whether actually three representatives are needed on some of them. It would also allow members up to indicate which organisations I would like to attend. Any comments on that?
It's not a comment on what you've just said, but I'm rep on the parish forum and I see that that's not in the list. The parish forum working party, or whatever they're called. Yes.
For what? You've got that to listen?
Yes, please.
Okay, any comments on defer this item for a fortnight to the 27th of May?
Yes.
First, okay, second. So second, all those in favour? Joyce proposed, stand, second of all, unanimous. Okay, next point is... Okay, item sixteen is the schedule of meetings. And as we've been discussing now, it says on the 27th of May meeting will be council or planning and parks committee. I think we really need a council meeting on that date rather than planning and parks committee. And also, the future of the planning and parks committee will not be decided by that date anymore. But that's the idea, is everybody happy with a council meeting on the 27th of May rather than the planning and parks committee?
Okay.
Okay, so can we accept the schedule of meetings? We need to vote for that one.
Yeah, we do, yeah, that's the best thing.
Can I just question something, sorry? Can I just question the 13th of August, 10th of March and the 24th of March?
Right.
Because I believe these are Thursdays.
Okay. Oops.
Oops. Lucky someone's away. Think they would be wrong.
It's okay, I mean, just...
Well, spotted.
Which one's spotted?
That's me office.
It should be the 12th of December. We get some nice ones there. 10th of March, was it?
Second.
The 10th of March?
Yes, 10th of March and the 24th of March.
10th of March, 16th?
It's all delivered, isn't it? Okay, it's not the image.
Would be the 9th of March.
So the 9th and the 23rd. And the one on the 13th of August is actually the 12th of August.
Yeah, so the amendment then is that the 27th of May will be a council meeting. The council meeting on the 13th of August will now be the 12th of August. The meeting of the council on the 10th of March will be now the 9th of March. And the meeting of the planning and parks on the 24th of March will now be the 23rd of March. Is that okay? Okay, another proposal to accept the schedule of meetings, Vince, second?
Four.
All those in favour? Thank you very much. Next one is the appointment of the internal auditor.
No, I'm not quite happy to. Council is required to have an internal auditor, one of the things is that it should be appropriate for the council's size. Currently, our internal auditor is Mr. Roger Snowden, he visits three times a year. He's usually in September, in January, and as I reported to you earlier on, his final visit for the last financial year will be in May. Now, Mr. Snowden has been the auditor for six years, five, six years, six I think. And there's no requirement to appoint an auditor at this moment in time. I do have to apologise that I haven't really had a chance to perhaps look at other internal auditors. So I would suggest that this is deferred until the next meeting of the council, when you will have Mr. Snowden's final report, certainly for new members who perhaps haven't seen his reports before. And that will perhaps give you a chance to make a judgement as to whether he is reappointed. In the meantime, I can also look for other internal auditors that are out there. Mr. Snowden charges £160 per visit, so which is what he's paid. Yeah, so it's £480 per year. So what he does is normally, in the past he has been appointed at this meeting, and he then produces an audit plan, which the council then usually approves or has approved in the past in the August meeting, which is now the 12th, not the 13th. And Mr. Snowden then comes in in September and starts work to that audit plan that has been approved by the council. So any undue delay, if you like, in appointing an internal auditor may limit their ability to produce that audit plan. So it's not overly urgent, but it really doesn't have to be either today. And if that is the case, then it will be Mr. Roger Snowden, our existing internal auditor, or the next meeting, when you will have his final report on the council's account and governance of 24, 2015, and you might be in a better position to make a more informed decision. And also by that time I should have other alternatives available for you to consider.
Got one question, is it purely a financial audit or is it...
It's to do with the council's governance, it's risk, how it's managed its risk throughout the year as well. It is not just purely the accounts.
Procedures and such.
Yeah, it is the council's procedures, yes.
I was fortunate enough to meet Mr. Snowden, so I do know he does a good job. His predecessor was moved on because of the external auditor, new people wouldn't know this. The external auditor said, and it's in a report, that the auditor had become too close to the council. Now, I don't know whether that was time or whatever, but to me, I would appreciate it if the clerk was to find some new people, because six years is probably what the previous one was doing it for. And we wouldn't want to get into the situation where there's a file online that says that Oakham Town Council is once again too close to its internal auditor.
I think it's important that the council has to have this relationship with its auditor, but it must not be close and it must not be comfortable. It needs to be, should we say, a critical friend of some sort, which is going to look into the accounts and also the government's documents. So I've got time. Can we then go for a nomination? I'm not sure.
If I may, Chairman, I would ask the council to defer this again.
Okay.
Until the next meeting, when you have his final report. If newer members would like to see his previous reports, then please let me know and I can let you have them. And then you might be in a position to do what he has said. And also, as I say, I will look for other internal auditors through, probably through the L R A S, actually.
Okay.
A little list.
Okay, and our proposal to defer this item until the meeting on the 27th of May.
No, it won't be the 27th.
Bit of one up here.
Yeah, it's going to be the 10th of June.
10th of June, sorry, okay. All those in favour? Okay, item eighteen, the appointment for working groups. Number of working groups if we need to appoint, as you know, we have officers of duty working group, finance working group, promotions working group. Do you have a fitness working group as well?
We do.
Yes.
Which is good.
Right. Policies and procedures working group first then. I'm on that, and there's also two vacancies plus the clerk on that. So we're looking for new people beyond that. In fact, I'm quite happy to stand there for that if anybody wants to take a position. So if you have any nominations to join the policies and procedures working group?
Despite our differences, Mr. Deace, I know that you can do that job, so I'd like to nominate you for that, to remain on that.
That's a slap on the back, isn't it? Despite our differences on nominating.
Well, I'm honest, that's my problem, isn't it? I'm too blunt and honest. But I know you've done that for a long time and done it properly.
You have a nomination for me, any second.
Sorry.
Just can't get rid of it. Any other nominations?
Because it sounds like nominees, myself and councillor Jewis, we could really do with one more.
At least one. At least one.
Would you like to do that?
Who's winning?
Councillor Stubbs, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Councillor Stubbs is proposing himself, I presume?
George.
It's a preparation.
Have a second of the Councillor Stubbs.
Paul, seconded, yeah, thank you.
Excuse me, excuse me.
I'm just checking, Mr. Elliott would like to be nominated.
Disruptive, you'd be allowed to be nominated.
Can you explain what the role is, please?
Basically, the council has a number of policies and procedures, these are in dire need actually of a fundamental root branch review over the next 12 months, I would suggest. This is everything from grievance, policies, health and safety policies, implications from the Equality Act, trying to think of everything else that's on there.
Data protection?
Yeah, there's data protection.
Anything which would really require to have.
It's systems of internal control, it's written management documentation, there's a great big long list. And the idea would be that the policies and procedures working group would probably meet once a month, I would suggest. Probably tackle one of these a month to bring it to the councils, so there is this rolling programme going on. So that every month there will be a, you know, Equality Act, for instance. What is, you know, the council has to do, it has to be, it has to have some sort of policy relating to the Equality Act. So the role of the policy and procedures group would be to go away, look at that and put a proposal to the council, having taken, you know, all the advice and guidance that it can. So it's quite a meaty group.
Obviously, anything related to employment, you have to keep within employment legislation and good practice as well, so that does that too.
Yeah, I know. What have we got up to now?
We've got myself, stand, and we need one more.
If Michael's willing, go on.
I was just going to ask Michael.
Would you like to be nominated?
Yeah, sure, okay.
Can I withdraw then, please?
Ah, that doesn't help.
No, it doesn't.
There'd be two.
Oh, I see.
We'd better have three.
It spreads the word, doesn't it?
Sorry, Stan, it's all right.
Okay, you're all right. I'm just saying it'd be better with three, except you, if you want to have a drink.
Yes.
First time she's had one.
Have we got a proposal for Michael?
Proposing himself, have a second of the mic.
Yes.
Joyce.
Five seconds.
Do you need to...
Okay, so policies and procedures working group consists of the clerk, councillors, Jewis, Stubbs and Elliott.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Next is the finance working group, there are two vacancies on that, plus the clerk as a member. And obviously, for the finance working group, it would be ideal to have someone with a background in financial knowledge, if that's possible. Although local government finances is particularly...
Need one question, Anthony, you've got promotion as well on that.
Coming to that.
Finance and promotion.
Finance is separate from promotion, though.
Yes.
And promotion?
No. No.
No, promotion is separate one. Finance is... There's a compliment to go to finance. No, finance is separate from promotion. Do you have any nominations for finance working group?
Yeah.
I'll go for it.
Bit of description.
Would you like to give, mark some description?
Well, finance is, one of the key things that the finance working group does, and this was brought in a couple of years ago, was to prepare a draft budget. Now, prior to that, that responsibility fell to me. And it was felt that that was probably not the best way of doing it, because it was just one person's view. So, I think it was two years ago, it was Robyn, Peter and myself, wasn't it? So we would then get together, that's one of it, that's one of the things, to prepare a draft budget. And then there's two or three people getting their heads together rather than just my view, if you like. So that's one of them. There is its financial risk assessment to go through, the council's investment strategy to go through. I think that's, yeah, there's only three, there might be another one that I've forgotten. Financial risk, investment strategy. We formulated fraud policy last year.
You find that the financial, like revision of the financial regulations goes through the...
Financial regulations.
Wouldn't finance work?
Review the financial regulations. They're the four main ones.
It's getting very, very quickly into local government accounts.
That's like the last people. So the first thing that the finance working group would be looking.
Does contracts come into this?
Within the financial regulations, yes.
It comes into it. I'll put mine in.
What did you mean by the contracts? They do not issue contracts or anything like that, it's just looking at policies regarding...
It doesn't issue contracts?
No, 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 not at all.
I noticed under financial reports, a lot of the contracts are out of date or rolling over.
Which one?
Contracts we...
I don't know, I looked at it about three months ago, and it seemed that some had run out. Whether the list hadn't been brought up to date, I don't know. But there were some of the contracts that either run out or rolling over.
Oliver, the person to go on the finance working group?
That's what I was asking.
Right, so can we go back then? We now have Paul proposing himself, and that's second of the call. Michael, are you interested?
Okay.
Okay, a second of the mic. And we've also got David.
And David.
Second of the day.
And David.
Okay, okay. We've got one more, we need, so that's no problem.
No, no.
Okay, so we now have three members and the clerk on the finance working group. Okay? Promotions working group. At the moment, this is really a working group to promote Oakham and, I suppose, the financial viability of Oakham, promote the town council within Oakham. It looks all aspects of that. At the moment, we have Adam Lay on, who I understand wishes to continue, and Joyce is on there, I wish, understand wishes to continue. So presently, there's one vacancy for promotion of the working group.
Can I suggest Paul now, who's got the vision for the future? If you'll take it on?
Yes. You okay for that? Can I have a second of the call, Vince? Any other nominations?
I've asked in the past to go on to that.
So you nominated yourself?
I would like to be considered.
Any, any second of, Mr. Brooks? Okay, second of, so, um, is there any problem with having
It's better with three, actually. An odd, odd, sorry, an odd number.
Well, we've just, yeah, sorry.
So can I make a comment? I not, I know there's a problem with me asking to go on that committee. I really want to promote Oakham, and I noticed on the budget that that committee, and I think Mr. Dees has brought it up about the budget, they haven't spent the budget. They're not actually, and I don't mean to be offensive, but they're not actually performing what the committee should do. And it needs some new ideas. I don't claim to know everything, but I would hope members would support me with good intentions to go on to the committee and put some input, not a hundred percent, but just some, so that we are promoting the town, the council, and whatever, to give it a good image.
So we now have four nominations. Do we get Adam and Joyce?
We've got Adam, Joyce, uh, Paul, the seconded person.
Hi.
Michael.
Michael, sorry.
Okay, so we've got four who have been nominated and seconded. Um, we can obviously go up to four if we need to. What are the views of the, of members?
Quite important.
Okay. Okay, then we will increase the promotions working group to four, and the floor will be Adam Low, Joyce, Martin Brooks.
Thank you.
Look. Am I got it right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. The next one is the fitness centre working group.
That was, the, the issue with the fitness centre working group, Richard, I think it was, it was Paul, yeah, he was
Not much, sorry, did I meant, called the wrong name, I think?
Yes.
Yeah.
What, I was reading that.
No, you did call the wrong name.
I called your name out instead of Paul.
I believe so.
Okay, sorry.
The, the working group is Paul, there's Juris, Adam, Paul, Martin.
Wrong name. Paul and Martin, okay. So it's fitness centre working group. At the present time, we have first week, there's Adam Low, Stan Stubbs, David Blanks, and, um, that's it, I think, isn't it? Has somebody come off it?
No.
No, okay.
They're, they're the current members.
The current members.
To, to come off?
Who's, oh, um, Alan Walters and Jane. And Jane, that's right, so it does, in fact, could have two vacancies if we needed to. Um, do those, I, I know Adam wishes to stay on it. Do you want to stay on, Joyce?
No.
You want to come off? David?
I stay on.
You want to stay on? Okay, so is any, any other nominations for the fitness centre working group?
I would like to go on.
Okay, any second of the council group.
Yeah.
Okay, um, any other nominations?
Might have to nominate yourself for that.
All right.
Can I second that?
Yeah.
Okay, second of, so we've got, any more, sorry? Okay, so we've got Joyce, Adam, Stan comes off, David, Martin Brooks, Vince Howard. So we've got one, two, three, four, five. Okay, do we need to write that?
We're probably dead, actually, yeah.
Okay, can I, um, can I, uh, yeah, we're going to be, we'll be nominated anyway. All those in favour of those five, yeah, on the fitness centre working group? Who knows? Thank you. Thanks, Andrew.
So, Mr. Dees. Before, before we move on, um, can I ask that perhaps that group could have a meeting to come and back to the council with, um, because I've been speaking to Rutland County Council about possibilities.
Yes.
And, and I think it would be good if the working group actually had a defined yes or no decision from the council, because if we start going to Rutland County Council, looking at the options, they said they would point us in the direction of a bigger project funding. We wouldn't want to go through the expense and time of all that to, for the council then to turn around and say, we don't want to move.
Yeah, okay. I think that's down to you to arrange.
Yeah.
As members of the group, you can, all you need to do is get together, arrange a date and do it.
Yeah, that's fine. So we would, if we could get a decision, that would be helpful.
Just between the two of you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Andrew. Um, three accounts, I think, isn't it?
Yeah.
The council's current account, which President of himself, Stan, and Adam Low signing, signatures, and then the mayor's charity account, charity account, which is myself, Adam Low, and there's the Cambridge Buildings Society ninety day account. Now, I wish to come off of this, I'm sorry to say, but I don't think I can sign the mayor's charity account if I don't get to be acting as mayor. Um, so for the council's current account, Stan, do you wish to remain on that decision? Okay, Adam doesn't agree with it, and it's not top of it, doesn't. How many do you want? Three, four?
Well, at least four.
At four. Any nominations to, uh, the signatures for the council's current account?
What, you're coming out of current account?
Please, yes, yeah.
All right, on that, Paul.
Okay, okay, okay. Second of four.
Can I have a second nomination?
Yep.
Can I have a second, Vince?
Is that right, you?
Yeah.
Yes, any second of it? Four, one second. Any other nominations? Want to be signatured?
Not at the moment, I don't wonder, I wouldn't want that responsibility, but thank you for asking.
Second of Vince.
Michael.
All right, okay. So the four signatures are to be on current account then, uh, councillors Adam Low, Stan Stubbs, Paul Mills and Vince Howard.
Yes, that's good.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, good one. All those in favour of those?
They're very, they're very okay with that, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor's charity account, can we actually have two, any two of those, um, to sign it?
One of the, one of the things, Chairman, is, is, um, although, I mean, the mayor's charity account, there is only one cheque per year generally written out of this, um, there's fundraising throughout the year, as, as Jane indicated earlier, and she's raised something fifteen hundred pounds. That comes in, it's paid into the mayor's charity accounts, and one cheque is made payable to Arts for Rutland. Current signatory is Adam and Alf, obviously Alf will be the chairman, so, as he said, that's not appropriate. So all we need is a signatory for that account. You're quite happy to be on, what's that, yeah?
Was it just one you said to me?
Yeah, we had, yeah, so you, you're proposing Stan Martin?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm a second on that. There's no problem with the four we're already, um, collected for the current account, so the signatures for the mayor's charity.
As I say, not, not with this one, we've got three different ones on Cambridge, so.
Okay, all right, Cambridge Buildings Society ninety day account. Um, would you like to explain?
Yeah, I can just explain this, um, the council has, um, uh, an, an investment account, if you like, with the Cambridge Building Society, um, as you're all aware, interest rates are, uh, being very, very low for some time. Um, and, uh, two, three years ago, uh, the council were opening an account. Now, the signatures on there at the moment are Adam and, uh, uh, former councillors, Charles Howard and Maureen Dodds. Now, one of the guidances is, this is an account that has a lot of money in it, it currently has sixty thousand pounds in it. Um, finance working group last year recommended that the maximum investment in that account would be a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, the signatures to, to that account basically, uh, issue instructions to Cambridge Buildings Society. So, uh, and they, um, say we would like it primarily to withdraw money that for the vast majority of the year, uh, there is that substantial amount of money in it, but when we normally get to around December or January time, we normally take out about the ninety thousand to bring it down to sixty. So again, it's only, uh, maybe once or twice a year, those signatures need to, uh, sign anything. Um, but it is, it is quite a key account, and I would like, if members are agreeable, that the, the signatures to the current account, which are now, uh, Adam, Stan, Paul and Vince, should not, we need three completely new signatures to this account.
Thank you. Chair, uh, I noticed, Richard, while he was making that statement, was looking at Paul the whole time, so I'll nominate Paul.
He's already, he's already, he's already signatured. He did, he's already on the current account. So, um, uh, I would need, um, uh, Alf, Michael, Joyce, Martin, uh, and David, three out of those five.
Can I just make a comment? I'd rather not be in something so big and responsible, but, um, what concerns me about that? You've just heard two names of councillors who resigned quite some time ago, and I'm, if the policy and finance people have noted that, because I feel that that is quite a risk, that people have resigned and we have no access to the money. And I think when someone resigns or whatever, it should have been dealt with straight away. It shows a bit of carelessness there on the council's part.
Does somebody resign, does the authority disappear when someone resigns?
Definitely, yeah, yeah.
But not, not necessarily, because I've worked for an organisation where somebody was a, a signatory, and they hadn't sent in a specimen card, and Barclays Bank actually took their signature for two years. So there is a risk with banking, and I think
When you're allowed to get signature?
Um.
Don't be bashful.
Well, I just, I'm, I'm a bit flattered that you want me to do it, so I will accept if, if, if I'm being nominated, but I'm We need them, don't we? And it's only signing from
Go to yourself. Excuse me, Jane, can I just ask a question, it doesn't show it on here. Out of those numbers of signatures that you've got for each account, is it any two from four or three from three?
Yeah, it's usually two signatures.
It's not sole. I don't want it. Yeah, that's the guy I didn't want there.
If it's not sole, can we just have one person talking at the front?
The current account, well, as soon as I've answered the question, the current account requires two signatures, requires two signatures. I am not allowed to be a signatory, well, I am, but it requires a signature of two members of the council. Okay? Similarly with the, um, uh, Cambridge Building Society, uh, although if you wish to close the account, that needs all three signatories, but in the normal run of things, two, two are enough. Okay, so it's two out of three, two out of four, two out of five. It is always two, there is never a cheque written, which, which has one name on it.
Okay, who, who was available then? We did not cross it.
So it's not particularly onerous to ask it, maybe once or, once or twice a year.
Okay.
So I've got Michael, Martin.
Good morning.
Uh, it's got to be somebody who, who isn't on the current account.
Can Alison do it?
No.
No, we have to have members, please. So it's David, Joyce or
Cannot the chairman.
It's got to be me.
Or you.
Yes, the chairman should be able to.
Okay, well, we're going on as a nomination.
So three signatures for the, the Cambridge ninety day account would be, uh, Michael Elliott, Martin Brooks and Alf, do you? Jose?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You, Jane?
Yeah. We get on. And I'll second over that. Over to you.
Thank you very much. What are you doing there? I'm here. All those in favour?
Well, who would you like to add to that?
I'm new for the staff.
What, Shepherd's thing? How do you comment on Shepherd's thing?
I don't want to be first. Okay, um, we mentioned confidentiality of, um, staff earlier, and I, and there's a very serious, um, issue with this payment list. Um, I've read up local authority guidance on this. We should not be publishing in the public domain the clerk's salary, the assistant clerk's salary, or their tax details. The council should be keeping a separate register in the office, and this should be the combined or redacted figure on the list, if we're obviously, the way this is here, but it shouldn't say, because of, you mentioned the ensued rights, that is an employee's right for that to be confidential, and it is under local government advice.
Um, I'm afraid the local government salaries are not confidential.
They are up to, as an employee, if you, if you go to the L A R C, they will tell you that that should be confidential, it shouldn't be put in that in the public
The personal detail is confidential, but the salary's not.
Um, well, it needs to be looked at. That's why I'm saying on that, because it's, i- if it's above a certain figure, I think it's fifty thousand pounds salary or something, then the name does go away. It may be a hundred thousand, I couldn't remember what it is, but, yeah, it's a higher figure. Um, then there was the other point of the N N D R on the toilets, which is huge. Um, it's more than this office, and what I find extraordinary about it, and forgive me if I'm wrong, but I, from sitting on the sidelines, I believe that Oakham Town Council leases the premises, even though they only pay half towards Rutland County Council, towards the cost. We lease it for some smaller amount of money, if I'm right, Richard. Um, so I'm wondering why, in that case, Rutland County Council is not paying half of this money? Or even if it's correct, when you compare it with, um, the rent for offices, sorry, the, the rates for offices, um, then the next thing, um, down was, um, you've had some legal advice, which has cost nine hundred and ninety-four pounds eighty. I, I was led to believe that the council paid a membership to the local association of councils for legal advice, and I was wondering what that legal advice was for. I have my suspicions because I do know the firm, and I do know the man, Mr. Briggs, wasn't qualified in what he sent me. Um, and also, I was asked by a member of the public, so I've added this, this, they wanted to know who the personnel advice company is, where the council's paid a hundred and twenty pounds. We're not interested in what, what it was for, but they just want to know who the company is because they couldn't read it all.
Personal advice and solutions.
Right, that's fine, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to check that there was nothing else there.
Need to come back on there.
Uh, well, I mean, the lease of the toilets is, is as with any lease, um, if you
We're going to need to end at, uh, well, twenty thirty-five. Um, likely to organise a, an information of the, of councillors in about a week's time, so we can go through where we want to go in this coming year, what projects we are very keen to do, what projects we want to go from. So, um, if I can let you all know, um, date and venue within about a week's time. Possibly a week to date, Wednesday's obviously, Wednesday's in between meetings, obviously, we could, I think. And if you can be prepared by thinking about what you'd like to do in this coming year, what projects you think the council should be doing, what sort of approach should we have to, to do, something that would be useful, and we can have that discussion. And then, okay, so I'll let you know.
This needs to be signed.
Yes, sorry, sorry.